At this point in time, we call the meeting to order. I'll call the row.
Bouchon.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Dykstra. We have the floor.
Thank you very much. Would you please rise with me for Senator Lawrence's prayer?
My Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen.
If you would join me in the flag salute. Attention, position, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. I am God's side of the murder. I am here for justice and fairness, for our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Would you consider approval of the motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll move. Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call the question. Motion carries 6-0. Would like to recess this meeting and call to order the meeting of the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Do we have a quorum? Do we have a quorum? Consider the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Call the question. Motion carries 6-0. Item number two.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, commissioners. Item number two is an item that would authorize us to proceed with sales tax revenue notes in the amount of $3.565 million. This was an addition late last week to your agenda. As staff, we were looking at ways that, knowing that we were going to need to fund some major improvements related to Fire Station Number Two and looking at other public safety needs, we began some discussions with our bond council, and they presented this opportunity to us that we felt was prudent, that we brought to you quickly because of the timing on it. And so, that is what this item would authorize. We have Chris Gander and Alan Brooks in the audience that can provide, hopefully answer any questions that you have related to this endeavor. If there's any more general questions, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Okay.
Chris Gander, Bank of Oklahoma, and Alan Brooks, Public Finance Law Group.
Thank you.
And Van Hooijen.
Thank you. Good.
How are you?
Good.
Thank you.
Do you want me to talk a little bit about it, or do you just want to go ahead and ask questions?
I think if you could educate me just on the process and what you've done as to date, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Okay. So, I think kind of to start, as your financial advisor in other cities, a lot of times at the end of the year, one of the big things with cities is being able to issue debt, I don't say bonds or notes, is bank qualified. The bank qualified rules, you guys can issue, a municipality can issue up to $10 million per year, and it's bank qualified. If you go any more than that, more than $10 million in taxes, none of it can be bank qualified. What that means is basically a bank can buy your debt and get the tax advantages of it being tax exempt. Generally, and it varies from bank to bank, you're going to get about 25 basis points less if it's bank qualified, I say 25 to 40, depends how long the term is. So, a lot of times at the end of the year, cities are trying to get financings in. You guys had done a previous financing there, which left you a little more than $4 million right now that you could still do as bank qualified. And this has come up over the years because sometimes OBU will come in and try to pick up because their trust is also the ultimate beneficiary, is the city, so they also have to issue under your bank qualified status if you all allow them to. So, that was one of the reasons, this is before you, because we can take advantage of the bank qualified status. The second thing is rates are going up dramatically, and that's one of the tables, the color chart. This is just a generic bond issue, 25, it's tracked. The top is from 1982 to today, and you can just see it's kind of a steady decline. It's gone down, had a few little ups, average is 6.3%. The bottom chart, you can see where the little square is up on the top, so we're just kind of zooming in on what's happened in the last year. So, you can see at the beginning of the year where it was close to 4%, got all the way down to about 3%, and basically since then, we're all the way back up to 4.1%. Basically, we're about where we started, started the year. So, with that, I'll add that the 10-year Treasury at June 30 was under 1.4%. And as of today, the 10-year Treasury is at 2.4%. So, you've gone up 100 basis points in no time at all, and most of that has been since the election. You're at about a 180 on the 10-year just before the election. Once again, we're, so it's gone up 60 basis points since the election. So, that was another reason we were talking about it. Kind of the third, or banks, a lot of times have kind of a, they're trying to get so much revenue on the books, or so many loans booked, and a lot of times they kind of have, they're trying to get money out the door. So, it seems like you can get kind of better rates right at the end of the year sometimes. So, that was the third reason. And then, the fourth reason is the table that you have in front of you here. And this is a summary of your debt outstanding, and the key part is over on the left side in this bigger box is the sales tax notes you have outstanding. So, if you look to the far left, this is fiscal year ending, and we left two historic years, so you guys could see where you were. In 63015 and 63016, you had the 2011A and the 2011B, and one was $310,000 per year. This is your debt payment, principal and interest, and the other one was $512,000. So, you were paying approximately $830,000 or $840,000 on those. On 12/116, so just a few days ago, you made your last payment on that. So, you just had 830, is that right Cindy? Approximately, you had 830,000 of debt fall off. So, what we're talking about doing with this note is not even, you can go to the 2016 note, that's the one we're projecting, so you're basically filling that in at 550,000. So, you're paying 830 now, those just fell off, and we're basically just adding back in 550 of debt service. So, your debt service overall is still going down. So, with those four things, we were talking to Justin and Cindy, and they were talking about the need for coming up next year, and we were just saying, honestly, our advice would try to get it done before the end of the year. I know that's kind of short timing, but went over the things, I just went over with you, and they said, "Well, let's at least present it to council and see if we can get a consensus." So, that's why we're here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, have patience with me as I flounder through this, if you will. Now, what I just heard you say is that the debt service is going down, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the cost savings here to the city is what, on an average month? When, should we enter into this agreement on this?
I don't know if I'd call it savings, but your debt service is, even with this new debt going on, you'll be paying about 250 less than you are now, approximately.
The debt that just rolled off was the 2011, that was the EXO.
Yeah.
All that, that probably just rolled off, we just paid it off.
That was the parking lot, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm. Parking lot, electric, we had one fire engine in it and a couple of other.
A couple, I don't remember what they were.
Little ones, I can't remember.
This essentially is a lock rate.
Yes, sir. 2.14.
For things that have been on the agenda previously, that we know are going to be incurred. So, before rates go up, we're trying to beat the train out of the station.
Okay, so this will be a reduced ink amount on the rate, is that what I'm hearing you say?
If we borrow it now, we think the rate will be less than if we borrow it three months from now when we actually need it.
Okay. So, then, considering the series, I guess this question's more one for Justin. Did we consider, and I mean, no disrespect to bank first, but did we consider other banks to ensure that we looked at a broad spectrum to see if we would be getting the best?
That may be a question, so I'm with Bank of Oklahoma Financial Security, so I'm actually with a broker dealer of Bank of Oklahoma.
Okay.
And so, I actually don't work for the bank, I work on the other side. So, we're hired as your financial advisor, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to advise you to the best of our ability. So, sometimes we'll go out for bid for these things, we basically analyze whether you're better off doing a note or a bond issue, whether you should do a competitive bond issue or negotiate a bond issue or a private placement note. In this circumstance, and that depends on how long the debt issuance is and just the general market. So, in this scenario, we're actually the bank, it's not Bank of Oklahoma that's taking this, this is BBNT out of Carolina, and they're the ones that we believe have the lowest rate. They're actually the ones that, we did a refinancing for some waterboard debt six months or so ago, and they had the lowest rate, and we used them then. So, we called, talked to them about it, I compared this to bond issues, got some indicative rates, and this was what we believe was the best deal. We would, so this is to BBNT, and as your financial advisor, we're recommending BBNT, but we did look at other options.
Okay, all right, that was my question.
What's the length on payout on this one? What was the payout on this we're doing tonight?
Seven years.
How many?
Seven years.
And this will make more funds available to our municipal authority, is that what we're looking at doing at this point in time?
Correct.
And I'd noted in Section Four on Page Six that it indicated that there was a certain sales tax revenue being used to secure this note. Can someone educate me on what that certain sales tax revenue is?
It's secured by a .875 sales tax, so it's seven-eighths of 1% sales tax.
Which is basically the capital fund money.
Yeah.
And we've been paying 832,000 a year, and this debt service will go down to 550, so it gives us a little more capital, and the fire station is a definite need, the ladder truck ours is getting very old, and then we have one other engine that is shot. So, this is going to take care of the fire needs that we have talked about for the last two years or longer.
The portion of sales tax dedicated is the same as it was before we do this.
Yeah.
This is a no change kind of thing.
Good, good. My final question is that I'd noted in Section Five that it indicated that it would be the City of Shawnee and other issuers. What are we looking at, or who are we looking at in regard to that language?
The authority, is that, or here's the attorney that.
Was it Section Six under the certificate of designation, is that what?
Well, I think it was Section Five, but I could be inaccurate on that. I don't have that right in front of me.
Well, we mentioned in Section Six, the authority anticipates the total amount of tax exempt obligations issued by the authority or other issuers on behalf of the city.
Okay, then it is Section Six.
Is that the language you're referring to?
That is the language.
For the bank qualified designation, all right, in other words, where we indicate that we're not going to issue more than $10 million in a calendar year to obtain this, what we call a bank qualified designation, basically, the city and the various trusts or public trusts that issue debt on behalf of the city, we have to count that in aggregate. In other words, if there was GEO debt, excuse me, issued by the city this year, other utility authority debt, as an example, Chris mentioned, OBU possibly issuing debt through a trust on behalf of the city.
Airport trust.
Essentially, we aggregate those other issuers that have the city as the beneficiary, along with the city's debt, and as long as it's under 10 million, we can get the bank qualified designation.
Understood, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned the airport trust thing under this.
Just, if they issued any debt, it would count against that tax exempt.
Aren't they talking about doing some, for the tea hangers and some of that stuff?
That would be in the wild.
Well, but we're not that far off of our $10 million aggregate. Did you say we were just over $4 million?
They'd have to have it closed by the end of the year, so as long as it's not by the end of the calendar year.
It's a calendar year.
Calendar year, resets, yeah.
Tell me what a middle-of-the-road debt coverage is for municipality on ignorance?
I don't know if there's a middle of the road, but there's a lot, a lot, generally, there's some kind of coverage requirement, which is for additional bonds, it's 1.25 or so, 1.5. There's more than you'd want to see bumping up against the 1.25 coverage.
Okay.
So, and then sometimes they'll pledge taxes that have to be used, obviously, for operations, so you might have somebody that's pledging their 2% general fund tax, and they might have a 10x coverage, but if you take out what they truly need for operations, they're pretty low, and you know, that one half to two times type of coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, I was talking about how the city viewed by.
Yeah, I think we're just, what Alan's saying is, you guys graded out very high, and that's why BBNT had already done a loan with you earlier in the year, they liked your credit, your sales tax is going up, you not really have dispositions to the oil industry, is a lot of the western side of the state, so, and they like your debt service coverage. So, all of those things, and good fiscal management drives down this rate, and that's one of the reasons, not us, but you know, you guys doing a good job on your balance, your cap, or yeah, to have a low rate, yeah.
Any other questions? Would they entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Maugren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Put a dollar in the jar, I thought I turned that off, I thought.
A resolution authorizing the Shawnee Municipal Authority, the authority to issue its sales tax revenue note, Series 2016, in the aggregate principal amount of $3,565,000. The note waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiated basis, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement buying between the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, the city, and the authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenue. Approving and authorizing execution of a note indenture authorizing the issuance and securing the payment of the note, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, establishing the authority's reasonable expectations with respect to the issuance of tax exempt obligations by the authority in calendar year 2016, and designating the note as a qualified tax exempt obligation, authorizing and directing the execution of the note and other documents relating to the transaction, including professional services agreements, and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Call a question?
Who made the second?
Who made the second? Ron.
Commissioner Gillum. Ron.
Motion carries 6-0. Item number three, consider bids, equipment bid, trailer-mounted six-inch trash auto crime pump. There it is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commission. I do apologize for not having a photocopy for you, I didn't know how much time I had, and I didn't want to be stuck in the middle. So, I'm just going to go ahead and read these sealed bids for you.
You're fine.
The first bidder is Normco Energy from Shawnee, Oklahoma, and their bid amount is $38,664.22. And the second bidder is Pumps OK out of Oklahoma City, and their bid was $49,513. And I'd like to defer the bid award to the 19th.
Move we defer. Motion by Commissioner Harrod to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Call a question? Motion carries 6-0. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
This meeting is adjourned. We reconvene the meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of Shawnee. I can get my papers back in order. Item number two, citizens' participation. We have a three-minute limit and a 12-minute limit for topics. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
We've got Polly.
Please tell us who you are and.
Good evening.
We know who you are, but rest of these folks don't.
I'm sure you got on there, Holly.
Oh, Wisconsin, I was volunteering today at the community market, it was cold, so. My name is Holly Gordon, I live here in Shawnee, and I invite all of you to go downtown. If you haven't seen the production on Main Street, let me just say, it is good. It is very, very good. Our section in the 100 block of East Main is open, and businesses are open, and we are seeing last Saturday, the traffic, the foot traffic, people parking downtown, families coming out and spending time with one another, it's really good. So, if you haven't been downtown to Main Street lately, please come downtown and visit. There are some great businesses that are open, and.
What's that address?
We're at 112 and a half, East Main, and we're open every Saturday. I don't know if you know, but Savvy Bites has moved downtown and is right next door to Shepherd's. It's a gourmet kitchen store, and it's amazing. So, please come downtown and visit and see all of the people that are heading to downtown Shawnee, because it is a unique place to come visit and shop, and spend some good time with your family.
I think after we see more of the open, which is coming soon, we'll see more people walking.
Yes.
Very nice walk down there, and the businesses should have some advantage from that.
It's picking up.
And I will see you Wednesday, by the way, in the meeting.
Fabulous, so it's picking up, so please come down and enjoy downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you. Item number three, city manager presentation of Oklahoma Municipal League certificates to employees with 25 or more years of service with the City of Shawnee.
Mayor and Commissioners, it's my pleasure this evening to recognize these employees for their dedicated service to the city. What I'm going to do is read one of the certificates, and then I'll ask the five individuals, those of them who are here, to come up, and then we can all recognize them together. But this is presented by the, from the Oklahoma Municipal League, and these five individuals have been entered into the honor roll of service for their service to the City of Shawnee, that service of 25 years or more, so quite an honor. Those five individuals are Mr. Ward, Mr. Wesley, Mr. Townsend, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Van Antwerp. Those individuals are here, please step to the front, please. I just have to shuffle here. Please join me in thanking these individuals for their service.
Thank you. Item number four, consideration of resolution of appreciation for Ann Masters, executive director of the Pioneer Library System. Ann is retiring after, I think she said, 47 years.
Is that all of Pioneer?
Want to recognize her service if there is any discussion?
Well, I was the one who initiated this resolution, and I must admit that I've always been impressed with Pioneer Library. And as I read the agreement that we had proposed this time, I'd noticed that Pioneer Library had over 40 years of service here in the Shawnee area, and I attribute a lot of the changes and the constructive ways that we've approached consumer needs there at the library to Ann. She's been challenged, I'm sure, at times to ensure all of the community is included, but I believe she's gone above and beyond at many levels to make sure that we were aware of the new programs that she had, of how the circula, circulation, boy, I cannot talk tonight, Ann, has improved and changed, and how there are so many things available through our Shawnee library and through the people that serve in the library. You've made such a big difference, Ann. I thank you on behalf of the City of Shawnee, and if we could have our mayor maybe read the resolution to you.
Can I interpret your comments as a motion?
Yes, yes, a long-winded.
We have a motion. Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. I will call on the attorney to read.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution expressing appreciation to Ann Masters for over 15 years of loyal service to the Pioneer Library System, directing the said resolution be spread upon the official records of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to the said Ann Masters.
All in favor?
Do we have a copy?
I'll hit it twice, just as you walk in, sir.
And I'd also like to note three other things while the mayor's coming down, is that she did help with the redesign of our library in 2009, that she completed the revision of the customer code of conduct promoting safety and comfort of our customers, and the creation of the Pioneer Library System Foundation. So, thank you again, Ann.
Can I take a minute to talk about the library? This was really unexpected until I talked to Lisa this weekend, but thank you so much. I've really enjoyed my association with the City of Shawnee and have made a lot of good friends here. I think I'd only, I grew up in Oklahoma, I came from Henrietta, and then went to school at OU, but I think I'd been to Shawnee one time, and that was when I brought my daughter here to a tennis tournament, as a matter of fact. But I've made many trips since 2001, and it's a great city, and Pioneer appreciates its relationship with Shawnee. I passed around a handout to each of you, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Never pass up an opportunity, you know, to talk to the decision-makers in the community. Pioneer has been working with an analytics group that's helped us with our strategic planning for the last three to four years, and the front of the handout that I've given you is our strategic plan, kind of in a nutshell. We have a new promise, a new brand promise, and that is pioneering tomorrow's library. So, in the next few months, you're going to see that rolled out, and that will be on our literature and our vehicles, and so you'll begin to recognize that as being our brand for Pioneer. The mission statement is what guides the work of our staff, and it is inspiring innovation, engagement, and learning in our communities. So, that is, that's the goal of every one of our staff members, to contribute in whatever way they can to that mission. Our, the way we're going to be measuring that goal is an increase in the number of households that have an active library card. So, we're, our goal.
Shawnee. I can get my papers back in order. Item number two, citizens' participation. We have a three-minute limit and a 12-minute limit for top. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
We've got Polly.
Please tell us who you are and.
Good evening.
We know who you are, but rest these folks down.
I'm sure you got over there, Holly.
Oh, Wisconsin. I was volunteering today at the community market. It was cold, so. My name is Holly Gordon. I live here in Shawnee. And I invite all of you to go downtown. If you haven't seen the production on Main Street, let me just say it is good. It is very, very good. Our section in the 100 block of East Main is open and businesses are open. And we are seeing last Saturday, the traffic, the foot traffic, people parking downtown, families coming out and spending time with one another. It's really good. So if you haven't been downtown to Main Street lately, please come downtown and visit. There are some great businesses that are open and.
What did I hear?
We're at 112 and a half, East Main. And we're open every Saturday. I don't know if you know, but Savvy Bites has moved downtown and is right next door to Shepherd's. It's a gourmet kitchen store and it's amazing. So please come downtown and visit and see all of the people that are heading to downtown Shawnee because it is a unique place to come visit and shop and spend some good time with your family.
I think after we see more of the open, which is coming soon, we'll see more people walking.
Yes.
Very nice walk down there. The businesses should have some advantage from that.
It's picking up.
And I will see you Wednesday, by the way, meeting.
Fabulous. So it's picking up. So please come down and enjoy downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you. Item number three. City manager presentation of Oklahoma Municipal League certificates to employees with 25 or more years of service with the city of Shawnee.
Mayor and commissioners, it's my pleasure this evening to recognize these employees for their dedicated service to the city. What I'm going to do is read one of the certificates and then I'll ask the five individuals, those of them who are here to come up, and then we can all recognize them together. But this is presented by the, from the Oklahoma Municipal League. And these five individuals have been entered into the honor roll of service for their service to the city of Shawnee. That service of 25 years or more, so quite an honor. Those five individuals are Mr. Ward, Mr. Wesley, Mr. Townsend, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Van Antwerp. Those individuals are here. Please step to the front, please. I just have to shuffle here. Sir, stand for you. Sir? All right. Please join me in thanking these individuals for their service.
Thank you. Item number four, consideration of resolution of appreciation for Ann Masters, executive director of the Pioneer Library System. Ann is retiring after, I think she said, 47 years. Want to recognize her service if there is any discussion?
Well, I was the one who initiated this resolution and I must admit that I've always been impressed with Pioneer Library. And as I read the agreement that we had proposed this time, I'd noticed that Pioneer Library had over 40 years of service here in the Shawnee area. And I attribute a lot of the changes and the constructive ways that we've approached consumer needs there at the library to Ann. She's been challenged, I'm sure, at times to ensure all of the community is included. But I believe she's gone above and beyond at many levels to make sure that we were aware of the new programs that she had of how the circula- circulation, boy, I cannot talk tonight, Ann, has improved and changed and how there are so many things available through our Shawnee library and through the people that serve in the library. You've made such a big difference, Ann. I thank you on behalf of the city of Shawnee. And if we could have our mayor maybe read the resolution to you.
Can I interpret your comments as a motion?
Yes. A long-winded.
We have a motion. Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. I will call on the attorney to read.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution expressing appreciation to Ann Masters for over 15 years of loyal service to the Pioneer Library System, directing the said resolution be spread upon the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and providing that a copy hereof be presented to the said Ann Masters.
All in favor? Do we have a copy?
I'll hit it twice.
As you walk down, sir.
And I'd also like to note three other things while the mayor's coming down is that she did help with the redesign of our library in 2009, that she completed the revision of the customer code of conduct promoting safety and comfort of our customers and the creation of the Pioneer Library System Foundation. So thank you again, Ann.
Can I take a minute to talk about the library? This was really unexpected until I talked to Lisa this weekend, but thank you so much. I've really enjoyed my association with the city of Shawnee and have made a lot of good friends here. I think I'd only, I grew up in Oklahoma. I came from Henrietta and then went to school at OU. But I think I'd been to Shawnee one time and that was when I brought my daughter here to a tennis tournament, as a matter of fact. But I've made many trips since 2001 and it's a great city and Pioneer appreciates its relationship with Shawnee. I passed around a handout to each of you and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Never pass up an opportunity, you know, to talk to the decision makers in the community. Pioneer has been working with an analytics group that's helped us with our strategic planning for the last three to four years. And the front of the handout that I've given you is our strategic plan, kind of in a nutshell. We have a new promise, a new brand promise, and that is pioneering tomorrow's library. So in the next few months, you're going to see that rolled out and that will be on our literature and our vehicles and so you'll begin to recognize that as being our brand for Pioneer. The mission statement is what guides the work of our staff and it is inspiring innovation, engagement, and learning in our communities. So that is, that's the goal of every one of our staff members, to contribute in whatever way they can to that mission. The way we're going to be measuring that goal is an increase in the number of households that have an active library card. So where our goal is, is to have 50% of the households in any one of our communities to have an active library card, active meaning someone in that household has used the library in the last year. So we've kind of set a high mark for ourselves, but that's what we're working toward. I think right now we're kind of in the neighborhood of 38% on the whole. So we're shooting to increase that. But our strategies are to expand, find innovative ways for area residents to have access to library services. We have some new library cards for children and teens that have no fines associated with them. They're for them to check out reading materials and we hope that that reduces the barriers to their access to reading materials in our communities. We're working to expand our literacy program. And in Norman, we're working hard on the design of two new libraries that were voted a year ago this past October. So that's a, that's a big challenge, too. Mobilize is the second part and that is we've developed a mobile app. We've learned that so many of our customers are accessing not only the library, but most everything they access through their mobile devices. And so we've developed our own mobile app that makes it easier for our customers to not only access the library catalog, put things on hold, but also to download our eBooks and other items from the library. Accelerate, we're vastly increasing the size of our digital collections because more and more people are using eBooks and audiobooks online. Inspire is, we've had a very active early childhood program for several years that we call Growing Like a Reed and it's R-E-A-D. And so that's been integrated into our storytimes and our work with early childhood programming. But now we're expanding that into the elementary grades. We provide books twice a year for the backpack programs through schools that go home with children who need additional food for, to take home, but also they need some food for the mind, so we're in doing that. We have, and you may have seen in the newspaper or heard about, our Makromobile that promotes STEM programming, science, technology, engineering, math, and art, STEAM actually. And so we have designed and equipped a box truck that can take technology to your mall or to Gordon Cooper or to the library and involve students in activities using a variety of technologies. And so that's, we've just rolled that out in June and so that's something that we're really moving from literacy, meaning what you read in books only, to literacy, meaning technology and learning of all kinds. And the finally, the final one strategy has to do with leading and that's a challenge to ourselves, to incorporate the use of technology and the way we manage the library system and knowing enough ourselves that we are of use to our customers and are able to share information with them. So I just want to point out that inside this, and encourage you to take a look, there's some stats about your Shawnee library. Over 225,000 people came in the door last year, about somewhere in the neighborhood of 90,000 books were checked out and 67,000 non-print items were checked out. Our programs at the Shawnee library were well attended and some of those programs are highlighted with pictures and information on the remainder of that handout. Thank you for giving me the time to.
The 38% that you quote, is that across the system?
That's a system average.
How does Shawnee stand relative?
I think it's just a little lower than that, but it's in the neighborhood.
In the ballpark.
Right. It's in the ballpark. Right. So I would, I have some colleagues here with me tonight and I just want to mention that Karen Bays is your library manager, Ann Dickinson is the circulation manager at the library, and Jamie Davis is the literacy coordinator for Potawatomi County. And she has really worked hard and increased the reach of the literacy program here in Shawnee. And besides that, she was my freshman in college roommate. So after, after all these years, we're together again. Go figure. So thank you very much for the time here tonight and for the great honor that you've given me.
Thank you. The library system is an important asset to us and we recognize that. I'm interested in this, in this fine free card. I have a book at home. I owe you about $12,000. Item five, consider and take action with respect to a resolution of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by Shawnee Municipal Authority issuing its sales tax revenue note, series 2016, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding with respect to the sale of said note, and approving the proceedings of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenues, establishing the city's reasonable expectation with respect to the issuance of a tax-exempt obligation by or on behalf of said city in calendar year 2016, and designating the note as a qualified tax-exempt obligation and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Mr. Mayor, this is the companion item. Staff would recommend approval.
I move. Moved by Commissioner Herod.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford.
Got to read something again.
Deja vu. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. A resolution of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Shawnee Municipal Authority, issuing its sales tax revenue note, series 2016, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding with respect to the sale of said note, and approving the proceedings of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenues, establishing the city's reasonable expectation with respect to the issuance of tax-exempt obligations by or on behalf of said city in calendar year 2016, and designating the note as a qualified tax-exempt obligation and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Call on a question. Motion carries six over. Thank you very much. Item six, consider a resolution approving a project maintenance agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the installation of wayfinding signs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Item number six, if approved, would authorize us to move forward with our wayfinding project because many of the locations around town where these signs will be located are on state routes. We do have to have concurrence and agreement, and an agreement in place with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. So staff does recommend approval of the attached resolution and project agreement. Be happy to answer any questions that you have. In terms of the actual project itself, what this will allow us to do is to move forward with the final bid packet and we will come bring back that item to you hopefully on December 19th and then hopefully open bids in January or February and that project will be wrapped up in the second quarter of 2017. Just as a reminder, we have $150,000 budgeted for wayfinding efforts. The wayfinding plan was paid for entirely by Visit Shawnee Incorporated. They have also committed $75,000 to assist with signage. So we have $225,000 in total. And we are, this has been an ongoing project for a number of years and we are so close. Looking forward to resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Justin, I have several for you. Can you educate me which department is currently managing the wayfinding system? Is that your?
That is something that I inherited from the planning department and have taken over to see it through. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I looked at the criteria system and I was just wondering why we hadn't included the mall. I guess so many of us always go to the mall and we probably all know where it's at, but just, can you educate me why it wasn't on there?
I can't actually. We, our signage standards have to comply with state and federal regulations and those regulations are very specific because signage needs to be uniform across the country, otherwise there's hazards involved with the motoring public. And so things such as, such as the size of lettering, colors, the list of destinations, the maximum number of destinations you can list on a sign, there are literally reams of regulations on signage, which is, which is part of the reason why it's kind of a complicated thing to get through. In this case, one of, one of those regulations says that we cannot advertise for private businesses and for kind of commercial activity. So ODOT has a system in place where you can, companies and for-profit businesses can get signs on the interstate with their logos, say for restaurants and hotels and things like that. So they have that, that in place. But our limitations on in-city signs are for things that are like nonprofit or institutional such as Gordon Cooper, Oklahoma Baptist University, Cultural Heritage Center, things like that. So that's why you don't see Shawnee Mall or other commercial entities on those signs.
I guess my other thought was that I'd noticed that we had the airport on there. Do we not have any other forms of transit that we could currently look at for signage?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
You know, I wish we did, but at this time. Now, that's a good point, though. I mean, this thing, these signs are, a wayfinding program is generally considered good for about 10 years. And so as things change, as different, different draws hopefully change and the community grows, you know, we'll have to update those signs as time goes on.
So we do have opportunity to go back to ODOT and request for a changed or an updated plan?
In fact, once, once this agreement's in place, just to change the copy of a sign does not require additional approval. So what this is approving is, is the overall concept and the general placement of the signs. But as we, as we move forward, changing simple copy changes and taking out a sign panel and replacing it, we can do that administratively.
And I guess my last question here, Justin, is according to the agreement with ODOT, the city is only for wayfinding signage on US 270 and State Highway 18, so we're going to be looking at a different agreement for the remainder part of the, remaining part of the signage? Is that what we're looking at?
This agreement is designed to encompass the city limits absent those areas that they, that they're, that they can't release jurisdiction to us on. So we're never going to be able to control signage in city limits on I-40 or along 177. They have a separate, what they call a supplemental agreement that they enter into cities with on those. They also have a separate process that we can go through to request additional signage on I-40 or 177. So I would say that in addition to this activity and this effort, there's going to be a complimentary effort on those other locations.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Would entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution approving the project maintenance agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for a wayfinding sign project.
Call a question? Five ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Item seven, consider an ordinance repealing and amending section 2-109 of chapter two, administration of the city of Shawnee municipal code by repealing section 2-109 in full wherein the city manager served as airport manager and amending section 2-109 with new language clarifying the city manager as the general manager of the Shawnee Airport Authority, providing for codification, repealer, and severability and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Items seven and eight are related in the sense that this, for the last couple of years and longer, the city has gone through a process of recodification where we've taken a look at our ordinances and reflected upon where changes need to be made, where changes need to be made in light of changes to state law. And so over the last couple of years, this body has approved various changes and we've got a couple more for you for consideration tonight. Item number seven would change section 2-109 to make a relatively simple minor adjustment. And what that would do is signify the city manager as the general manager of the airport rather than the airport manager. And that would put the language in code consistent with the airport authority trust indenture, which is really the governing document for the, for the trust. It would also make us consistent with airports around the state. There is no change to personnel or to, or to finances by this change. This really just makes the code reflective of what we actually do today operation-wise. So staff would recommend approval of the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I would also note one final item and that is, this item was discussed by the airport advisory board as well to get their take and that was actually done in January of 2016 and they did agree and did recommend approval to you to make this change.
With the size and potential of the airport, it makes good sense to make it more central. Move it down a little closer down to, to the ground. And I think when I was with the commission in 92, Terry Powell was basically the manager of the airport. And I think it was really more than a single person could do from that level, certainly the city manager. So it's certainly a good move to move it back the way it used to be when it originally started, actually, because the potential's a lot there for continued growth and that's better served by the method.
And I think Commissioner Gillum makes a good point in that the duties, I think, are definitely of the nature to where we need a full-time manager there. I guess I have two questions for you. One is why is this an emergency considering how long that we've had this language in here and that it truly is not risking public health, safety, and welfare of the airport at this point in time? And that's usually what emergency codification is for, is it not?
As Mr. Manager has alluded to, this project has been a long time coming. There are certain statutory deadlines that are in play at this point, Commissioner, given transition of council and other factors involved. We have very few ordinances and amendments, recodifications left to complete this project by year's end, but need to do so. And so that would be the reason in this particular case for the inclusion of an emergency clause.
Does that deal with the effective date?
That's correct, Your Honor. Mr. Mayor, that would be, make it effective today if the emergency clause passes.
Clear motion?
I move.
Gillum? Seconded. Seconded by Bouchon.
And I would remind the commission that the initial vote will be just on the ordinance itself and that there'll be a separate vote on the emergency clause. Your Honor, it's an ordinance repealing and amending section 2-109 of chapter two, administration of the Shawnee municipal code by repealing section 2-109 in full wherein the city manager served as the airport manager and amending section 2-109 with new language clarifying the city manager as the general manager of the Shawnee Airport Authority, providing for codification, repealer, and severability, and declaring an emergency.
And you did say the vote would be separate for the emergency.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Call a question? Six ayes as to the, is there a motion as to the emergency clause?
I move, we adopt the emergency clause.
Seconded.
Commissioner Herod. Seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question? Six, five ayes, one nay. Item number eight, consider an ordinance amending portions of chapter 19 motor vehicles and traffic of the Shawnee municipal code, adopting, incorporating, and otherwise adding state of Oklahoma statute title 47, motor vehicles to chapter 19, providing for codification, repealer, severability, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, members, this is just a continuation of our recodification process. As the mayor noted in summation, this would adopt title 47 of Oklahoma statute, the State Highway Traffic Safety Code therein and make sure that our ordinance is consistent thereof. Be happy to answer any questions that you have. Staff does recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Shaw?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Herod. Seconded by Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending portions of Chapter 19 motor vehicles and traffic of the Shawnee Municipal Code, adopting, incorporating, and otherwise adding State of Oklahoma Statute Title 47, motor vehicles to Chapter 19, providing for codification, repealer, and severability, and declaring an emergency, which again would be by separate vote.
Call the question. As to the emergency clause, call the question.
Still need to be a motion and second, Your Honor.
Is there a motion as to the emergency clause?
Fall move.
Commissioner Harris?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call the question. Motion carries six aye. Presentation, consideration, and possible action on proposed changes to city ward boundaries.
Thank you. I'm going to stand up for this one. Cue up a presentation where I will go over these changes. Hopefully you've had a chance to also investigate your packet materials. There's a memorandum in there and then a pretty detailed examination of the proposed changes to the various wards. Just a reminder that we are required under statute to examine ward boundaries and make sure that each ward is roughly equal in population, or as the state statute requires, substantially equal in population. And so the opportunity to do so occurs every 10 years with the census. Census releases block-level data a couple of years after the census, so the 2010 data is usually available about 2012. And so even though the census was several years ago, we haven't had the full data until more recently and the time to really devote to this exercise.
Can you still have a 10 percent variation between the wards?
Say it again, sir, I'm sorry.
Can you still have 10 percent of that difference?
It's an excellent question. I'm not aware of an actual percentage set forth in state law. I think there's some case law that suggests 10 percent in other states. I couldn't find anything Oklahoma-specific unless Mr. Vander knows of anything. What I'm going to present to you will illustrate that we are at about a 6 percent variance today, and the proposal gets us to approximately 1 percent or below 1 percent. So just to quickly go over the goals of this endeavor, of course, we want to meet all statutory requirements. We wanted to minimize change because everyone is kind of accustomed to the boundaries and where they're at. So we wanted to make them substantially equal, but limit the impact. Ward boundaries are based solely on the census blocks. That's the best population information we have. It's really the only thing we can use. So it's a totally blind approach that only considers population. And so our primary data source, as I already mentioned, was the census. So if I continue on, I'll let you do it, Steve. Thank you, sir. So if we look at our population based on 2010 census, again, our population today is estimated over 31,000, but based on the 2010 that we have block-level data for, you'll see the difference in wards by population. And you'll see that one ward number three represents 14.35% of the population, where Ward six represents over 20%. And so if we were to just divide six into 100, then every ward should be about 16.6666 onward population. And so when you look at the left-hand column, you'll see the minimum-maximum differentials is the extreme level of 1711, 5.7%. What's been proposed is to get that down to 267, the difference of 267 individuals between the highest ward and the lowest. And that again drops us below 1%. And I do believe that that meets the intent of the state statute. I'd like to do now is, obviously this is in your packets, and you can zoom in and look at it at a very different scale. This isn't going to show up well enough here where individuals at home or in the audience could, can probably see the streets or where they live. But what you can notice is some of the broad changes, especially between six and one. And we'll zoom in to the changes as we go forward. Go ahead, Steve. What we identified were six areas in the community that needed adjustment to get those six wards into a better proportionate. And so in your packet, the same information exists. The red lines are the current boundaries, and then in your packet, there's dashed black lines that indicate the proposed. And now we'll go into detail on these six. Change number one, Ward one and Ward six. And you'll see what it does, one of the things we wanted to do is where we made changes, let's make it as logical as possible, so there's not a bunch of zigs and zags and a bunch of various street boundaries. So let's try to stick to minimal boundaries as we can. So what we did here is indicated on the black dashed line is to shift that boundary to Kickapoo Avenue and then down through Union. So a bit of an easier way to describe the boundary, what it did is helped remove some population from Ward six, our highest population, and redistributed that to Ward one, and then we could distribute it further from Ward one to other wards through additional changes. What we also wanted to do is keep our census blocks contiguous and follow the ward boundaries because hopefully those census blocks stay consistent with the next census, and it'll make this endeavor even easier and quicker the next time around. Next image, change number two, in Ward one and Ward five. This is another example of a way that we really were able to clean up the boundary substantially and reallocate population. So now it's just very clean along Bryan Street and no more of this kind of back-and-forth east-west-north adjustments that represent our current situation. So lowers Ward one population, increases Ward five, and this helps us, again, better distribute population across the six wards. Change three, had a split census block. We also had to continue to work to lower Ward six population. Were able to do so with this adjustment. Weren't able to use Kickapoo Street, but we just shifted one to the east on the Wiza, and were able to use Federal Street and I think we'd go south there on, probably Broadway, I think is what that southern street is. Compared to where we were with the, kind of the squiggly circle there, this still represents, I think, a cleanup of the current situation, easier to describe. Change four, really just simply move the boundary from Broadway to Union between two and five, help with this allocation. Change five, this is another one where it was kind of complicated with lots of twists and turns.
From Broadway to Union.
And so we were able to address the issue with the split census block. And then just further adjust the boundary from Ward five, allowing for the reallocation of population to Ward three and Ward four. So this is kind of an interesting area because four wards converge here. So this allowed us to clean that up and address the population disparities. Change number six is the final change that we made. Again, we had a split census block and just a very, very minor change here where we just simply adjusted the boundary and I think took out a residence or two just to simply adjust that line so that it fell on the designated census block. So very, very minor here. This effort was conducted by John Clayton, our GIS manager, and completely independent of other staff and commission involvement. So we wanted to be very objective and unbiased as we went through this result, this resulting process. The map here on the left shows you the old wards versus the new wards. And again, at first glance, not a lot of change. The lockup here, you can see that's a little area there, an obvious one that we corrected, and then that area that I highlighted is the first major change. But overall, very subtle changes. And so again, the resulting, the result of this is six wards that are much closer in population than they are today. Unfortunately, just the nature of this, there is always going to be one ward that is still going to be the highest and one ward that's going to be the lowest. But I think we've done our due diligence, and obviously we'll try to refine this with the next census. And as the census gets more advanced technology and as we're able to incorporate their data into our GIS system, you know, we're able to have a greater level of detail than we could have, you know, 10 years ago or 20 years ago with this process. So on balance, staff does recommend approval of this proposal. One thing that we are required to do is to provide 30 days' notice so that the public can review these changes, can make comments, can come to you with any comments or concerns. And so what staff is asking for this evening is authorization to provide the required legal notice and prepare an ordinance for consideration at your January 17 city commission meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
It looks like you've given Ward two, as they say in tornado terms, a hook echo on the back of that as well. He's shaking his head yes. Yep. So now Ward two is actually the most populous, is that 70.1%? It's pretty very close, all of them are pretty close.
Yes, sir. They're very close, but you're right, Ward two is slightly up. And of course, this is the best guess at 2010 data. You know, we all know where some of the new residential developments are occurring, and we can hypothesize that, you know...
There weren't a real natural larger street boundaries in some cases. You've had to create Franklin and a couple of others to create the balance that you were after. I see that.
Justin, I think you and your staff have put in a lot of time and effort on this. I'd like to make the motion that we put this on, give it the public hearing notice of 30 days.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Bashaw. Call the question. Six ayes. City managers report.
Thank you. I will be brief this evening. At your last meeting, you approved a meeting schedule for 2017, and it may not have been overly obvious, but one adjustment that was made on that meeting schedule was the cancellation, there is no meeting on January 2nd, which would have been your normal meeting date after the New Year holiday. So I just wanted to mention that publicly so that none of us attended to an empty house. So keep in mind, however, though, that I'm trying to fill that slot because we were not able to schedule a retreat this month, so we're looking at a retreat date for you all in early January. Of course, we'll do public notice for that, and it will be an open public meeting, but we'll be reaching out to you this week to hopefully finalize that date. So no meeting, no first meeting in January, however, please look for a special call for retreat session. Couple other quick items. The community survey has, is now in the mail. 2,200 copies were mailed. I've talked to the survey firm. I know that they've already received many surveys back, and it's going well. And I'll be able to provide you a greater update at the next meeting. I'll get actual figures on where we're at in the process and how we compare to other communities. And also be making an announcement about how individuals that weren't selected for the survey can still participate. So I'll make that announcement on the 19th. I wanted to give you a quick update on the survey. And lastly, downtown streetscape, Ms. Gordon was gracious and came up earlier and bragged on downtown, and we'll say that we're hopeful that we can open up the next block, the 200 block of Main, that's the block from Union to Philadelphia, hopefully in about a week's time. The last concrete at the intersection of Union, excuse me, Main Street in Philadelphia was poured on Friday, last Friday, and so after that piers and given the weather, we're hopeful that about a week from today, it can, that block and that intersection can open. That means we just have one final block remaining, and we just have a couple holidays in the way of wrapping that up, but hopefully in early January, that final block will be open as well. So we appreciate everyone's patience and everyone's diligence on still frequenting those downtown businesses and supporting them. That's a summary of my report. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Seen none? New business? I have an item of new business. Over the weekend, I received a letter of resignation, Ward six Commissioner Michael Dykstra. I'd like to read that letter to the gathering. I have appreciated my time as city commissioner for Ward six of Shawnee. I am honored to have been elected. The experience is one I will cherish always. I've had a career change which makes it difficult for me to fully participate. It is likely this employment will continue to hamper me in meeting the obligations bestowed upon me by the citizens of Shawnee. Changing my career has caused me to take time away from Ward six. Balancing family, career, and military service has not allowed me to focus on representing the citizens of Ward six. With a potential military deployment and additional military training on the horizon, I need to focus on my home and family. I want the citizens of Ward six to have a representative that can focus their time and attention to serving them. For these reasons, I am submitting my resignation from the position of city commission effective immediately. When I took this position, it was my hope that I could in some small way impact the city and the city's relationship with its surrounding counterparts. I believe much of the controversy between the CPN and the city of Shawnee has diminished. I'm hopeful and somewhat confident that the single remaining issues between them can and will be resolved in the coming months. I intend to remain informed in the affairs of our community and will participate in my circumstances allow. Thank you again for this opportunity to help drive our city forward. I spent a lot of time with Michael over the weekend, and really, we couldn't figure out any way around this. So if that's the case, then do we need to accept?
Don't need to accept. The resignation would be effective upon its tender, which is now official, but at this point, the commission would have the ability, the remaining members of the commission would have the ability to appoint a replacement for Ward six. And I know there's been previous protocol. I believe that was, has always been to open it for application and nomination for a period of approximately 30 days, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. And I think that that would be an appropriate action at this time if the commission so chooses.
Is there a motion?
I would make that motion.
Commissioner Rutherford? Seconded by Commissioner Harris. Is there discussion?
I strongly oppose that we do an application process for this. This is not about the appointment of us as city officials appointing someone else. To me, it's about the citizens of Shawnee determining who that they would want in that position. So I cannot agree with this action.
Turning the additional comment?
Comment?
Yes.
Well, I would certainly like to welcome the additional 589 citizens and promise them this transition will be handled as smoothly as possible, less disruption than they would believe. I will handle it nicely. I will be at their back. I will take care of them. They will be mine. Thank you.
As to the motion on the floor, my comments...
Well, we've always...
Oh, that was the question.
Go ahead. We've always fielded, I've been on the commission four terms, and we've always used the application process to field a position. And the only time we had it's when we couldn't agree on the one that was fighting Ward one.
My understanding is that the appointment lasts only until the next general or special election. And Manager Erickson informs me that there's likely to be a special election sometime toward the middle or before of next year. So this appointment will be for a fairly short period of time, should we follow the protocol that was suggested in Commissioner Rutherford's motion.
Could I say one more thing, though? Since I was out of line yet, I really appreciated Michael. He had a lot of good input, and I wish he would have been able to continue, and I will miss him.
Thank you. Call the question. Call the question. Five ayes, one nay. I have no additional new business.
I have my leader, sir.
We are adjourned. Come on, comment.
Mayor, we didn't do comments.
Oh, wasn't on my cheat sheet. My apologies.
What?
Commissioner comments.
You already made yours.
Well, I said before.
Commissioner Harrod?
Well, I was just real pleased with the number of people that were out for the Christmas parade. I mean, the route was just packed on both sides of the street. And I know it's kind of inconvenient by going down Broadway and then to Van Halen, but anyhow, I mean, there were both sides of the street down Broadway were really packed. So I tickled to death with the turnout, and the people that organized that downtown, what is that, Safe Events, did a good job. So it really went off smooth, I thought. As one of the participants.
Do you have a comment?
Justin, I certainly appreciate that the surveys are out, and I'm looking forward to getting that information in. I think we can do a lot with that kind of information in regard to planning and processing for the future of Shawnee. I don't know if we have determined a date for our retreat yet. Okay, then I'd still like for us to keep our committees notified on that when that does get set. I've also asked, and I would certainly appreciate any input from the city commission in regard to us establishing honorariums for our city commission. And I've asked that Justin look at that to compare it to other cities, to see if there is honorariums given. This isn't new to government. Feds get paid, state gets paid. There's no reason municipal government can't be given some type of honorarium or stipend for the meetings attended and the work that's done here, especially when you do a lot of, like the mayor does, going out to a lot of the events and participates heavily in activities. I also would like to encourage those individuals who would like to assist the animal welfare shelter to go out and to look at getting an application from Chief Wilson in regard to maybe helping with maybe adopting, what is that called, Chief Wilson? What is that new?
Volunteers.
The new volunteer program that he's got set up. And Chief, would you mind speaking a little bit to that real quick about what the volunteer program would be doing?
We're just looking to get some citizen participation out there to interact with the animals. They can do things like walking the animals, or even bathing the animals, giving them baths. Gives more interaction, a better chance to take some better photographs of the animals interacting with people, and finding out what their demeanor is to adopt them.
And I think this improves the opportunity for adoption. I think this also gets more individuals to participate in this program and helps to offset needs. I'd also like to continue to encourage the city manager to look at possibly, I know previous city officials have had concerns about Amazon, but they do have the Amazon Smile Program, which does give funds of .05 percent as a donated amount to organizations that participate. And they have over 1 million participating 501(c)(3)'s that participate in that program. The last thing I'd like to indicate is that recently I resigned from the Beautification Committee, and this certainly was no reflection on the Beautification Committee. It's just my hope, Brian, that we can, Bryce, excuse me, that we can get this program kind of consolidated with the Chambers Beautification Committee. I believe the two, if they're merged, can certainly make a difference in the city of Shawnee. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are adjourned. And call the order of the meeting of the Shawnee Airport Authority. We do have a quorum. Item one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Commissioned by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call the question. Six ayes. Item two, new business.
One new business.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.